Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, December 1st, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 7th, 2022, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 7th, 2022, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 7th, 2022, said notice was posted in the Office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to the members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on How- Thank you.
Last sentence there, you froze there for a second, Eileen. Can you just repeat the where they can re-broadcast the?
Oh, yeah, sure. The meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Cristiano?
Present.
Mr. Gerardo? I have not heard from him. Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro? I have not heard from him either. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Councilman Bonavich? Haven't that heard from him? Mr. Spanville?
Here.
Ms. Talente?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those both serving here and abroad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. We have any minutes to approve?
I have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
Correspondence, I have some stuff. Could you give me a minute? I got emails this afternoon from Mr. Pape. The first one is regarding AAVRHW Property LLC, which is case SP 1105. He respectfully requests that the application be carried to January 5th, 2023 for scheduling purposes. He granted the board an extension of time to January 6th and said, provided that the board schedules the application promptly in 2023, a reasonable request for further extension of time to act will be provided.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Emily, why don't you just go through the other correspondence from Mr. Pape, and then I'll make both the announcement together.
The other one is about the other application on tonight's agenda, case number SP 1102, which is AASTHW Property LLC. And he also asked that that would be carried to January 5th, 2023 for scheduling purposes. He granted an extension of time on that as well to January 6th and will provide another request if acted on promptly in 2023.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the applications of AAVRHW Property LLC, case number SP-1105, and AASTHW Property LLC, case number SP-1102, will both be carried to the Board's January 5th, 2023 meeting, which is scheduled to be a virtual meeting beginning at 7 o'clock. The instructions on how to access the meeting will be provided on the township website at least 10 days in advance. All documents associated with the applications are on file and can be reviewed physically at the Planning Department or online. The carrying it to the fifth is not for a substantive hearing. It is for scheduling purposes in both instances, and there will be no further notice to property owners for either application. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just before I continue, just let the record show that Mr. Gerardo has joined us. So he is present. The next item I have is I sent all the meeting or possible meeting dates to everyone for next year. If everybody could please check your emails, review them, and send me any comments so we can discuss at either the next meeting or at the reorg, which is January 5th. And the last item, I also sent earlier this week, an ordinance from the council that was introduced, its ordinance O 2273 regarding the bulk requirements, and we need to comment on it tonight because their next meeting is prior to our next meeting. So we have to comment on consistency with the master plan.
Okay.
So this is-
Hold on, we'll get this morning there, Miss Beam.
Okay, sorry.
You swear or swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Jennifer Beam, B-E-A-H-M.
Okay, go ahead.
So this ordinance regarding the bulk standard is a reconciliation of some of the bulk standards, something new, and I would submit that it is consistent with our master plan.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody from the board have any comments or questions about this proposed ordinance? Okay, seeing none? Can I entertain a motion?
And it would be a motion finding that the proposed ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan.
Thank you, Ron.
I will make that motion. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Gerardo?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, and that is all the correspondence I have.
Okay. I guess, any resolutions?
I have no resolutions.
Submission waivers?
Can I go back one second? The last application on tonight's agenda is case SD 3006, Benzian Young Greece. That application will also not be heard tonight as they had a problem with their notice. So that will be rescheduled with notice, just for members of the public. Thank you.
All right. Submission waivers?
I have no submission waivers.
The application before the board is case number SP-11100, Monmouth Commerce Center LLC. There should be Ms. Gonchar or Mr. Faiella.
Merrill Gonchar.
Merrill, can you tell me who else you need brought into the hearing?
Yes, Steve Catani.
I have him.
Kyle Ferrier, whose name we will correct when he gets on.
Okay, thank you.
Adam Faiella.
I have Adam.
I'm gonna say hi and then turn off my video to help everybody not have as much bandwidth.
And then our court reporter, we don't know our court reporter's name, but if she could identify herself by raising her hand, then we can bring her in or him. Any hands?
No hands yet.
Oh.
But I guess even if they're in the audience, they can hear. Oh, I have it. It's Diane Holmes.
Who's, she was with us last time, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just only so that she can stop us if she can't hear something or if we're talking over each other, otherwise we don't know she's struggling.
Yeah, hold on because she's not in yet. Okay, we're good.
Okay. Good evening, Merrill Gonchar with the firm of Sales, Commerce, and Gross. My now partner, Adam Faiella, is with me this evening, and we are the attorneys for Monmouth Commerce Center. The applicant before you this evening, you may recall, we were last before you on September 15th, at which time we presented testimony from our engineer and our architect. At the end of that meeting, the matter was carried, was adjourned to October 20, and the announcement was made at the end of that hearing. And unfortunately, we were not reached on the 20th, and so this is the first hearing since our appearance before you. However, there were a number of questions raised, open issues or matters that required further attention at the time we were before you on the 15th of September. On October 7th and 10th, we submitted certain exhibits and documents for the purpose of addressing some of the issues that had been raised at the September 15th hearing. One of the exhibits submitted were revised architectural plans. The changes relate to the articulations in the walls and addressing some of the requirements under section 188-228, as well as providing a 3D rendering and line of sight information. We also provided some additional lighting plan exhibits. The lighting, as you will hear this evening, complies with the one portion of your ordinance, but does not meet the minimum .3-foot candle, as was addressed, but some additional information showing the manner of compliance with that portion of the ordinance that is compliant, how that was calculated. We've also provided a overall landscape plan exhibit. The purpose of this, as Mr. Catani will discuss, is to show a revised buffer along the property line along Oakland and Lakewood-Alenwood Road to be, we believe, in compliance with ordinance section 188-63E, which you'll recall had been the subject of discussion previously. And these redesigns, these revisions were incorporated following a site visit where Ms. Spiro met at the site, as we had discussed at the September 15th hearing, with Mr. Catani to walk the site, take a look at what was out there, and determine what would be necessary to make the entirety of the buffer compliant with the four seasons requirement under your ordinance. We have provided a colorized landscaping exhibit with regard to the loading area. And again, as Steve will discuss, which shows the manner that we've proposed to comply with the requirement of landscaping on all sides of the building. This shows one of the five buildings, and if acceptable, will be incorporated into the plan as to, I'm sorry, as to the other three buildings of the four. We had also been asked a question about environmental reports. In fact, there was a question because there had been some areas of concern identified in a report that was submitted in connection with the, an earlier application. I don't know if the entirety of that was resubmitted, but we have now submitted an updated document which indicates that whatever items were identified in the Phase 1, which is identified in that report, all of them have been addressed. There are no open areas of concern. We have two witnesses with us this evening. Mr. Catani, who will address the exhibits that I've mentioned, explain how we came explain how we came to those and address the open items that remained beyond those exhibits from his earlier testimony. And finally, Mr. Ferrier will address the revised architecturals, including the rendered, the rendering and the line of sight to address what would be seen from the areas on the street and as required in the ordinance for any equipment that might be on the roof. Other than that, we have nothing further by way of housekeeping other than to simply confirm that we do not believe that we have received any committee or commission reports since we last appeared. However, since we did make the submission of the environmental report, we have contacted, we've reached out or and to see if the Environmental Commission would like us to reappear before them. I believe their next meeting is prior to your next meeting. So if they want to see us again, we will make ourselves available to them. But to date, Ms. Ribano has confirmed that there is no report from the Shatree Commission since we appeared before them on the 21st of September, and no Environmental Commission report since we appeared before them. Don't hold me to it, but it was a few days before we appeared before you on September 15, maybe the week before or that week.
I'm gonna interrupt you for one second, Eileen. Paul Gerardo has his hand up in the audience. Thank you.
Oh, he got dropped out?
Yeah. Sorry, Merrill, I didn't-
No, no. I kept looking at you because you were speaking to someone, and I thought you were talking to me with your-
No, I'm, okay. I got a lot going on here, and I have a lot of distractions, but-
No, that's okay. I just thought you were trying to talk to me while-
I don't know.
That's, okay, that's fine. That is all we have, unless the board has anything before we call Steve again.
Anybody have anything they want to?
We good?
Yes, Ms. Gonchar.
Okay. All right, Steve, he was on, and at one point he crashed. Is he still?
He's still here.
I'm sorry, I should just go through at the bottom. Okay.
Mr. Catani, I just remind you that you remain under oath. If you could just state your name again for the record.
Steven Catani, C-A-T-T-A-N-I.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I didn't print out an updated exhibit list. I'm going to bring up the overall landscaping exhibit. I'm not sure. It might be A 19 or 20.
A 19. You have A 19 is the landscape exhibit from October 7th, and A 20 is an overall landscape exhibit.
So it would be A 20.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Steve, are you gonna put that up, or is someone gonna?
Steve needs to do it.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's see. This is going to allow me to do this.
All right, I'm not sure what just happened, but I've lost. Having some technical issues, I apologize. Can everyone see my screen?
We see it now.
Yes.
Okay, so-
Steve, again, can you just identify what we're calling? I know on the list is the overall landscape plan. Does that have a date on it?
So this is the overall landscape plan dated October 7th, 2022, identified as overall landscape exhibit sheet 2.
Thank you. All right, can you identify what that is and how it came to be?
So as discussed at the previous hearing, there was some question regarding the condition of the existing wooded area along the eastern portion of the property between our proposed development, the two buildings on the left, and Oakland Road and Lakewood-Alenwood Road to the east. So subsequent to the last hearing, I met with Ms. Spiro at the site to review the existing conditions of that wooded area and determine what that condition was and what, if any, additional measures would be necessary or as directed by Sherry's office.
And the purpose, Steve, and the purpose of that was because in the review letters previous to the September 15th hearing, there was some question as to whether the buffer, as we had shown it on the plan, met the requirement for a four-season buffer. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So I met with Ms. Spiro at the site, and we walked the eastern portion of the property along Lakewood-Alenwood Road and Oakland Road. And Ms. Spiro can certainly confirm, but what we identified was some significant brush and ivy undergrowth within this area. There's been a considerable amount of older growth that has died. There's been some invasive species that have come in, and there is a fairly significant amount of invasive non-native vegetation that currently exists along the eastern and northeastern portion of the property as identified in the green area shown on the exhibit here. So what we were able to agree upon was that this area would be denuded or removed of that invasive ivy and undergrowth, leaving open area amongst the existing trees that would remain, providing area for us to provide additional evergreen and deciduous landscaping within that green area to provide a more dense and heavily vegetated buffer along that property line. Additionally, we walked the edge of the pavement along Oakland and Allenwood-Lakewood Road and determined that based on the amount of vegetation and the condition of that vegetation, we would extend the berm that was constructed or proposed to be constructed along Randolph Road and comes around, just around the corner of Oakland. We would continue that six-foot-high berm and additional landscaping within this olive area along the entire frontage of Oakland Road and then down Lakewood-Alenwood Road to the southern driveway of the residence across the street. At that point, Lakewood-Alenwood Road starts to dive down, and you get a significant grade elevation change that acts somewhat as a berm in that area under the existing condition. So based on that sidewalk, we felt that the addition of that, extension of that landscape berm along Oakland and Lakewood-Alenwood Road, along with the clearing and adding of additional vegetation within the green area along the eastern side of the property would serve to meet that four-season definition of that area. We believe that based on what we see out there, we're looking at probably several hundred additional trees, evergreen and deciduous trees that could be planted within that area.
That's with the cleaning out of what's there now, the invasive species and the vines and other less than desirable material that's out there now?
Correct, and Sherry, if you want me to leave this up, if you had, if you wanted to add to that at all?
Yeah, Mr. Catani's testimony is consistent with our field meeting. There is a lot of vines, mile-a-minute vine that grows really fast, and that's taking over in that area. A lot of black locusts along the road that have broken in storms, and they're really not providing a buffer except for holding up vines that are making like a curtain. But once we stepped off the road, it is pretty empty in there. So certainly planting trees in that like bright green area would help with the four-season buffer. So and putting the berm up should significantly help buffer the warehouse areas. Yeah, and that olive green area. But Steve, I just wanted to ask, I saw it's hard to read on here, but the note in the middle says, is it one tree per 1,600 square feet?
Yeah, approximately 1,600 square feet, just assuming, based on a deciduous tree, if you were looking at just a general, you know, 40-foot or 45-foot circle, you know, that you wouldn't want to plant any closer than that. If we went to more of a, an evergreen-type species, we could certainly tighten that square footage up and plant them a little closer together.
Right, and so when the plants come back again revised, I'm assuming there'll be like a list that we could choose from for out in the field when you go to plant?
Yes, so we'll provide a, like you said, a wish list of trees that you would approve as part of any positive decision on this application. We would include that as options for planting in the area.
And then the 50-foot berm and the olive green, that will be designed, right?
That would be designed in a similar fashion as the existing berm along Randolph. We would continue that theme down within that olive area.
Okay.
I think what you're asking also, Ms. Spiro, is that the revised plans will actually show the details of the berm. It's consistent with what's shown for the other berm that's proposed.
Correct.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. And obviously, once that's further designed, you've indicated several hundred additional trees. So are we correct also that when that is finally designed, we will have a number for how many trees are being provided? And that will also inform the scope of the tree replacement plan, correct?
Correct.
In terms of calculating the number and what number of trees will need to be paid for in lieu under the ordinance terms?
I just have a question on that. When you say, you know, there's more analysis and calculations to be done, is that contemplated to be completed prior to the completion of the hearing process? Or are you seeking to have that as a condition of an approval?
If you're asking me, Ron, as I understand it, to the extent that, to the extent that the selection of trees by the board's representative is something that, as I understand it, they want to do when they're ready, we're ready to put the trees in?
Well, I was more speaking about the number.
Well, but my point is that what I thought I heard was depending on the type of tree might inform the number of trees, since some of them can be placed closer together. Steve, am I, or Ms. Spiro, am I incorrect?
I mean, he did mention that more evergreens would fit closer together, but I think what he's getting at is the final number that's going to be deducted from the replacement requirement. That will be on the plans. We're not going to do that, you know, after the fact because he has to design the buffer.
Yes, I think-
So I don't know the quantity in there.
Yeah, but ultimately, the replacement number would be defined on the plans.
Okay, if you're gonna know that, I just didn't understand that. That's why I thought there was still some wiggle at the end, depending on what, which trees were selected. But if that will all be done before the plans are finalized, then we will have the number. Ron, an answer.
Thank you.
Okay, if we're done on the trees, we can move on, Steve. Oh, well, let me ask you this. When- Oh, well, let me ask you this. When we said that we're going to design this berm consistent with the other berm, so the height of the berm will be similar, will the height of the trees at planting also be consistent? Or was there some other, no other design here that will follow the same as it's in the other portions of the site?
Yes, it would follow the same pattern and theme.
Okay. Okay, can you discuss then with us the, the lighting requirement? What we will be meaning?
Real, real quick, so we can, so we can finish up on, on the landscaping theme. Yeah, one of the other items that was brought up, which I believe has been worked out or possibly presented to the board on other applications regarding providing plantings on all four sides of the buildings. Obviously, in this case, we have buildings with loading areas. Typically, we would, we would not look to provide vegetation along the loading side of the building. However, to address the ordinance requirement to provide landscaping on all four sides of the buildings, we would be proposing a four foot green strip across the rear loading areas of the buildings. It would be at grade. It would be, there would be a curb provided and an area for shrubs and green plantings to be provided against the foundation of the building on the loading side of the buildings.
Is this something, Steve, that you provided to us yet, or is something you're going to provide to us?
It was an exhibit and I believe, Eileen, if you can correct me, it might be A21, it would be labeled Landscape Exhibit A.
That's A19.
That's 19. Okay, sorry, I went the wrong direction. I had a 50/50 shot. So A.
They were sent as exhibits and I forwarded them.
I understand that. I just want to make sure that what he's describing is what I have. That's all.
Right. So what I described was at Exhibit A19, which shows that the landscaping essentially along the rear of the loading area of the building.
Can you put that up?
Yes. Uh oh, all right, it may not may not want to cooperate now.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like I'm having some connection issues with, with that particular exhibit.
Can you just stop sharing and maybe one of our professionals could pull it up?
I just stopped.
Or are you able to?
Eileen, do you have the ability to? If not, I'll.
I don't, and it was sent as an email. I don't even think it's linked here. Okay.
You can, Laura.
I should be able to open it and pull it up. I'll try. You have it? I have it available.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Spiro.
Sherry, you'll probably be able to share it. Yeah, let's.
Mike, I'm hoping you guys aren't looking at me to do this because that's probably not going to happen.
That's why I'm sitting here very quietly.
That's a hard no.
Let's just let Sherry pull it up and not have the court reporter have to put down our chitter chatter.
Okay.
All right. All right, it should be.
There you go.
Okay, you can see it?
Yep. So for, for this particular building, we have the existing three island areas at the rear of the building, the two outer islands, which have the recycling enclosures and then the central island, which has some of the utility areas coming in between. What we would propose to do is essentially continue with a curb of four feet off the rear of the building and provide just a small landscape strip at the base of the building to install some additional shrubbery.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. And just for the record, the date on this plan, Steve, does October 7th, 2022 sound correct?
That's what I have.
And that's sheet one of two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Unless someone has questions with regard to the exhibit, I would ask you if you, Steve, now can move on to to discuss the lighting plan and the information that you provided. Excuse me, that you provided since our last appearance with regard to lighting.
Yeah, so let's see if I get this one right. Would this be Exhibit A21 now, the overall lighting plan?
Yes, it is.
All right, let me go ahead and share that. And of course, I'm getting the same, same error now. So Sherry, would it be possible for you to? Okay, thank you. Somehow, mid testimony here, I lost access. So what this exhibit shows is the overall lighting plan where we have calculated the proposed lighting levels over the entire area of the property. And this shows a point by point analysis within the property limits that we're calling the, the calculation area. And what this represents in the bottom, if you go to the bottom of the page, there is a table that identifies that the average illumination level within the area is 0.5 foot candles, which complies with the maximum average requirement. But we would not then comply with providing the minimum of 0.3 foot candles within the area. So we have shown a calculation area within the property limits showing compliance with the average of 0.5 foot candles, but are not able to comply with the 0.3 only as it relates to landscaped areas and existing open space wooded areas on the property. The 0.3 foot candles is provided on all travelways, pavement and concrete areas, just not within the landscaped and open space areas.
So for example, there is, there is no lighting in the buffers along the southerly portion or in the detention basins or in the planted areas around that, but in the improved areas, so to speak, or the the impervious areas, the lighting is as shown here at, at the required level?
Correct.
Okay. And would it be anticipated that you would put lighting into those undisturbed buffer areas, for example, along the the waterway at the south?
No, typically you would not.
And is it your understanding that the lighting, the minimum level that's provided is in the locations where it would be necessary for safety or for people to be able to travel safely through that area and utilize the space?
Yes.
And therefore consistent with the, the objective of the ordinance and requiring that, as I recall, it was sort of interesting. It doesn't say everywhere. It says point three, it uses a different term. But that would be what you understand the intent of the ordinance to be?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think one of the other areas that we had indicated, I don't remember if we confirmed it. There was a discussion with regard to the material to be used around the trash enclosure. It is required to be solid. The the fence with vinyl slats was not adequate. The discussion was between a solid vinyl versus masonry. And I believe there was a very strong preference for masonry. Have we agreed to replace? Are we now proposing to provide the masonry rather than the vinyl that we originally proposed?
Yes, the enclosures will be revised to be masonry structures.
Okay. And oh, there was also a discussion, as I recall, with regard to the existing buildings that are in a dilapidated condition. We had proposed, we, I think our characterization is that they are sort of going back to the land and we had proposed to leave them because your testimony indicated that they were within areas that are otherwise not proposed for disturbance within buffers of one kind or another. But again, a preference was expressed that those should be removed. Can you describe for us what's, if anything, is necessary in order to remove those?
Well, you may not believe me, but in, in an exhaustive search of the NJDEP regulations, there does not appear to be anything that precludes you from removing dilapidated structures from, from the wetlands and the buffer areas. So based on that investigation, our, our plan would be to go ahead and remove those structures and bring the areas back to their original condition.
In other words, regrading them, would that involve? Is there a possibility that any trees would be removed in taking those out or any other disturbance?
It, there are trees that have grown up through the foundations and through the rubble. We could certainly coordinate with Ms. Spiro's office to, to confirm that, you know, there would likely be some trees removed as part of the rubble in debris removal. I don't think that could be avoided just because of how long they've been there.
All right. But that, but we will remove those and deal with whatever the, I guess, consequences of taking them out would be. Correct, yes, money. All right, thank you. I think that that was all of the items that had been left open as part of your, or required further attention as part of your testimony. Unless there's something out, something else that, that you think I have left out of this.
I don't believe so.
All right. And for the record, the our understanding is that Section 188-106G would now be compliant based upon Mr. Katani's testimony regarding the proposed landscaping along the side of the building that has the loading bays. The and, and assuming for the moment that there is agreement that what's proposed now in terms of the, the buffering along the northwest and western portions of the site meet the four seasons requirement of the buffer, then the potential for variance with regard to that portion of the site would already have been eliminated. And I don't think that there was an issue about a waiver for the masonry versus vinyl, but we are proposing now the masonry. And we have, I hope, confirmed based on the information provided with regard to the lighting average that there is one waiver and that has to do with the minimum point three, which does not meet that requirement in the buffer areas or the landscaped and basin areas. So that would end our testimony for Mr. Katani this evening.
Gotcha. If I could just summarize, does this sound like you removed all design waivers and variance requirements other than the lighting?
Other than the one lighting and also we still have a waiver as to the scale of the tree replacement ordinance, I believe. I think that remains. I mean, I, I guess it's considered a, a design waiver. It sort of seems a little like a submission waiver, but whatever it is, that one still remains a, an active request.
For the record, that's Section 188-193.b dot one. It's the Tree Management Plan Scale. We have the information. It's just the scale of the plan.
Correct. And other than that, Mr. Chair, there were some other issues with regard to design waivers that are part of our architectural testimony. Our objective and we hope are, we've accomplished is to eliminate those as well, but we have not addressed them this evening yet.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I, I just have a one follow-up question. The discussion concerning the elimination of the dilapidated structures and perhaps some trees from the from the wetlands area, I understand Mr. Katani stated that he didn't find anything in the DEP regs which prohibited it, but is that part of a permitting process? Is there an application that goes to the DEP that makes them aware and they approve the removal of those structures?
No. So the, so what you're referring to, they typically call permits by rule or, or emergency permits and there are none that, that cover this type of activity. So we've, we've spoken to, to several of our wetlands professionals as well as individuals at the DEP. They've never had issue with the removal of dilapidated structures and in this type of work unless there is some issue after the fact that someone raises.
Is that something, Laura, that your office has taken a look at?
This is the first I'm hearing about it. We did ask for them to look into this and my preference was that they could be, was that they are to be removed. And it is my understanding that that could fall under permit by rule.
Okay, then I would just request that we just confirm that so that we're of, you know, just formally of the same opinion or not that Mr. Katani expressed.
We'll, we'll work with Laura's office to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can Mike, I'm stuck on this waiver relief for the tree ordinance. Can one of our professionals please just give us the Reader's Digest version of this in the layman's terms? I don't know what scale means.
What they're talking about is the scale of the tree management plan. So that's one thing, like the little scale of the drawing. But I think more importantly, it's the waiver to make the contribution. The, the relief was the scale of the drawing of the Woodlands Management Plan.
Is that because we require, say, an eighth scale drawing versus a quarter scale drawing or something like that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the second portion of that has to do with the amount of replacement trees that are be, that are to be provided. And I think as you heard testified to earlier, the applicant is going to be beefing up the buffer area, which is going to result in the addition of trees, which is why Sherry said in order to come up with what relief or the nature of relief, she needs to understand the number of trees that would be replaced on the site in order to ascertain what that contribution would be for the project.
So, Mr. Chair, at the end of the day, I think where we are, and everyone can correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant is asking for waiver relief. At this moment in time, they're not able to tell you how many trees they're going to be deficient, which they are seeking to make a financial contribution for. That information will be coming. So the exact, you know, the precise intensity of the relief, not yet known. They're going to work with Sherry. That information will be provided, but it does require the board to grant waiver relief to permit the in lieu of financial contribution rather than the planting. Is that, is that fair to say, Sherry?
Yes, that's correct. And, you know, even with the additional trees along that buffer area, there'll still be a replacement contribution.
Is it with, I don't know how to say this properly, Ron. Maybe you have helped me say it. I don't know how to say this properly, Ron. Maybe you have helped me say it. With everything that's around this application, right? This is round two for us. Why are we? Mr. Chairman, you can't look at it that way. This is a new application that they have filed. So you review it as a new application. This is relief that they require. You don't have the necessary information at this moment to either grant or deny the relief. So I think what the board needs to do is, you know, there's been some representations made, but you lack the information to make a decision. When that information is provided to you, you know, more questions can be asked. And you know, there can be deliberation, but at this precise moment in time, you lack the information to, you know, to make any decisions at all.
Thank you. You took the words out of my mouth. Okay.
We were also advised, Mr. Chairman, I think you're the one who stated that you want all of the changes in plans before the board acts. We did have numbers for the tree replacement when we came in initially. However, that changed when we were advised that the board's consultants had a different view of the buffer and the buffer's compliance than we did. And it's as a result of the changes that we made in response to that, that the numbers have changed. So the, we had a plan, we had a number based on that plan because of comments. We went back and looked at it again, went out at the site. The exhibit we're showing you is to get input so that when we do incorporate something into the plan, we know that that's where we're going with it and that it's not still a work in progress. And now that we know that we have a plan that we believe is acceptable in terms of where we're putting it, where the berm is going, where trees are going, that allows us to then do the details of it in terms of the number. So that's what we're working to, that revision that you had indicated the board would want to see.
So I think you have enough information now with enough input from the board to make those final
adjustments. And that was our purpose in submitting the exhibit at this point. So there are still other open items that would need to be incorporated, but that's what we're working towards, rather than doing multiple submissions in a piecemeal manner.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
I would, again, that's our direct for the items we believe required further attention from this witness. And we are prepared to present our architect if the board is ready to move on to that witness. Unless you have further questions from the board members for Mr. Katani.
Just ask, does anybody else have questions? Okay, Ms. Gonchar, please.
Thank you, Steve. Kyle?
You're welcome.
Yeah, good evening.
Hi, good evening, Kyle.
Okay, Mr. Ferrier, were you previously sworn?
Yes.
Okay, I just remind you that you remain under oath and if you could just state your name again for the record.
Yes, Kyle Ferrier, F E R R I E R.
Okay, go ahead.
See why I'm sticking with first names since I managed to misstate the last names. Okay, when you were last before the board on September 15th, Kyle, there were some questions and comments received from the board's consultants as well as the some of the board members with regard to the drawings and the design that you had discussed. Can you confirm that you had made a, had done some revisions to the plan to address some of those issues? And those are reflected in a group of drawings comprising nine sheets which were dated 10/7/22, I believe?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and those were those were prepared either by you or under your supervision. Are you involved in those revisions?
Yes.
Okay, and can you? Are you going to be referring to, or why don't you pull up the share, the first one that you'll be referring to?
A twenty-two.
Oh, thank you. The entire group is A twenty-two of the nine pages, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I have opened just thinking a minute. I have opened page three of nine. Should be coming now. And this is a floor plan for what we're referring to as Building B. And I'll be referring to the next two pages, four and five of this seminar, which are conceptual elevations and a rendering.
All right, I'll just ask you to refer to those pages again as you move through those. All right, now my recollection is that there was a discussion with regard to compliance with ordinance section 188-228. And that had to do with some of the articulations, the distance between breaks, for those of us who are not expert and compliance with a certain minimum number of design elements required under those ordinances. Can you walk us through how we have complied with those requirements?
Sure, so the first part that you mentioned there, the spacing between required articulations, that would be section 188-228, item C, which states that the maximum uninterrupted wall length is at fifty feet, but the maximum spacing between the required articulations does not exceed forty feet. So we have revised this exhibit to comply with that requirement. The articulations require that the face of the building project or recess to or from the wall, a minimum of three feet. So you can see that in this plan here. This is a three-foot typical setback in the to orient everyone. Randolph Road is toward the top of the page. So this is the three-foot typical recess that you can see going down entire building around all four sides. And these indicate the forty-foot maximum spacing between those articulations in plan. For the second point, I'm going to flip to the next page, which is sheet four of this exhibit. And that deals with the number of required elements. That would be 188-228, item D. So it requires the use of, it provides a list of, I think, thirteen or so elements that were required to have four. We indicate five on this drawing. We have a belt course, which is a change in texture and color at about windowsill height. The next one being metal canopies here at the entrances over the entrance doors. Glazing at the entrance area would be number three. One is listed as vertical articulation. We have pointed, we are using the breaks in the wall to provide a vertical offset in the wall. So it's kind of offset in two directions, both in plan and vertically. And then we have lights, lighting fixtures placed throughout the elevation. So those would be the five of the four required under that section.
Okay. And oh, all right, and then we had also been requested to provide a rendering to give a little more detail in terms of what the building will look like or the buildings will look like beyond the the elevations that had initially been provided. Can you tell us what you submitted and describe that?
Yeah, that would be the following sheet, but I'm going to jump back one just to orient everyone. So we have a rendering standing on Randolph Road approximately here. If you see where I'm drawing on my screen, looking at this corner of the building, of Building B. And that is page five of nine of this exhibit, and that is loading now. So that just gives an overall look, a representation of what you would see standing on Randolph Road, looking at the corner of Building B. You can see behind it Building E kind of off in the distance and pretty faint down here, but Building A would be down here on the right of the page, kind of off in the distance as well. But so we've provided this as a response to that request in the previous
And again, does this accurately or as accurate as you can on a picture as opposed to looking at a live example accurately reflect what is proposed in terms of the colors and the contrast and the design?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the other question that had been asked had to do with what would be visible in terms of the rooftop equipment, sort of a line of sight question. And I think your testimony at the last, the September 15 hearing had been that that the details of the location and characteristics of the rooftop equipment at this stage of development are not finalized, but that you were able to give testimony as to the potential for visibility from from the road and from other points. Can you discuss that, please, and walk us through that?
Sure, yeah, we, we're back to sheet four here, the elevations for Building B. And I'll direct everyone to this west elevation, so Randolph Road being on the left of the page here, what we've done is taken approximately 150 feet to the center of Randolph Road indicated the berm and from, we've taken a height of six feet from that point and basically drawn a line of sight that to show what would be visible from any equipment on top of the roof. So at the point where we believe rooftop equipment would be, which again, it's not finalized, but having done many of these buildings and been involved with that design, knowing where they would typically go, they're typically not at the edge of the building, they're usually set back a little bit from the edge. And so this would indicate that the rooftop unit would have to be 11 feet tall to be visible from that point, which we don't have the size of those units. I, I'm not a mechanical engineer to provide that, but having done enough of these, they would be nowhere near that high and that would be a condition of the application that they would be designed so as not to be visible. So that, and this would be the view that you see in the rendering here. So approximately, well, it's a little bit farther down the page, but if there was one on this corner, basically the the equipment is shielded by the building itself. So we provided that diagram for Building B and for Building A as well. It's a similar similar condition there. And those are the two that face the street.
Okay, so it would be your testimony that you would not anticipate based upon this design visibility and to protect against that, you would suggest a limitation on the height of any equipment that could be placed on the roof. Is that your testimony?
Yes, that's correct.
I think we have covered, and I I think those were the items that were were open for this witness unless one of the board members or consultants has a different recollection of what items had not been satisfactorily addressed at that time.
Gonchar, I think our consultants were quoting the 188-228C Architectural Reveal. Can we get some testimony from our professionals that the applicant has met these requirements?
Yes, the issue previously was the separation of the bump outs, which need to be every forty feet. They were beyond forty feet. They did provide bump outs in the last iteration on walls fifty feet or longer, which they're required to do, but they were not separated adequately. This addresses that issue.
Thank you. Looking at my notes, Ms. Gonchar, I think that's it.
Okay.
Anything else for the board has any other questions? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I spoke to Ms. Gonchar prior to the meeting today. There are some scheduling issues that the applicant's architect has. She's requested that we open the architect up to public cross-examination so that, you know, there may be a need for him to come back, I'm not sure, but at least on the testimony that he's given. Unless something new comes up, he would be completed. It's up to you, though, however, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's fine.
We appreciate that.
No issue with that. Okay, so then, Mr. Chair, we can open it up to the public just for questions of the architect, either on the testimony today or his prior testimony.
Thank you. Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public to ask questions or comments only on the architect testimony.
No, no comments, just questions.
Just questions of the architect. Architect, please use the raise your hand feature. I will bring you in one at a time. You will need to have audio and video and provide your name and address when you're sworn in. Anyone calling in, please use star nine to raise or lower your hand, star six to mute or unmute yourself.
And just so everyone's clear, you'll have an opportunity to cross-examine everybody else. And at the conclusion of the applicant's testimony, you'll have an opportunity to provide whatever testimony you would like. So all of that, just for tonight, we're opening it up for cross-examination of the architect. Do we have anyone, Eileen?
I have no one raising their hand.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think if you want to give like another minute or so and then we can close it.
Yeah.
That work.
I have someone raised their hand.
Okay, let's bring him in.
It's Mr. Morlino.
Okay, so this is not testimonies. We don't need to swear anyone in, but Mr. Morlino, if you could state and spell your name and give us your address.
Yes, good evening. Steve Morlino, Peepstone Road, Howell, thirty-eight years. I just had a question for the architect in regard to life safety systems within this building. What what life safety codes are we projecting this building will be in compliance with?
It'll be designed and compliance with New Jersey State Building Code, Fire Code. I can point to some of the particular elements. If you wish, we we provide all, go back to the floor plan of Building B here. So we provide for the Fire Code, one of those requirements is that there is emergency access at certain intervals down, down the building. So that's what you see these.
We can't see your.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Stop sharing.
Kyle, what would be the travel distance between those means of egress?
Well, let's just let him get the exhibit up.
Okay, apologies here. So this is, I'll go start over again. So this will be the floor plan of Building B, but the same features apply throughout all the buildings. The New Jersey Fire Code actually doesn't specify a distance between these doors, but other codes in Pennsylvania and other surrounding states uses a distance of 125 feet. So although New Jersey doesn't require that, we have provided that on these buildings. The building will be fully equipped with an automatic sprinkler system for the Fire Code and Building Code using the most recent codes. I believe New Jersey just adopted new codes in September. So we would just comply with the latest versions of all building.
Would the sprinkler be, would the sprinkler system be high capacity or high loading? What's the distance between sprinkler heads?
I don't have that information. As the architect, that would be a fire protection. I, I don't have that information. As the architect, that would be a fire protection engineer question.
Okay, I assume there's no dead-end locations in this building?
No, this is a, is just a shell warehouse. So the only, the only construction is the exterior walls of the building and a, a room to house the fire pump and equipment and the electrical room here. Other than that, it's just an open warehouse.
All right, the fire pump is, is a jockey pump, or is it got a backup generator? Diesel, what is it?
That, that's another question for a fire protection engineer.
Okay, maybe we could get those questions answered at a future time. All right, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else, Eileen?
Yes, hold on, I have Candace Dovenero.
And am I here? I'm here.
Okay, if you can just state and spell your name and provide us your address.
Candace Dovenero, D is in David, O V is in Victor, E N is Nancy, E R is in Robert, O fifty-eight Victory Road, Howell, New Jersey, zero seven seven three one.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I have a few questions, just basically dealing with, I know that this road corresponds with other warehouses in the area, one that, well, several. I'm actually interested in all. So, Oakland crosses with Maxim Sutherd.
Well, this, this is cross-examination of the architect.
I understand her. Can I speak?
Ma'am, do you have a question for the architect?
I'm stating a fact first.
Oh, that's testimony. Do you have a question for the applicant, for the applicant's architect?
Well, I have several questions. Okay, going back to the tree study, should I speak about that?
The tree study was not testified to by the architect.
So we're not worried about any kind of traffic study?
We're cross-examining the architect. I have previously stated that you will have an opportunity to cross-examine all other witnesses and to provide testimony. Right now, we are cross-examining the architect. If you have a question for the architect, now is your time to ask.
Yeah, Ms. Dovenero, to, to, to further clarify that, we're gonna open this back up to the public, and you'll be able to ask, as Mr. Chair said, questions of any, of anything. And or provide testimony. Right now, the architect is just asking to be heard because he has a scheduling conflict for the next meeting. That's why we're just limiting.
But if he was in person, if he was in person, he wouldn't have a scheduling conflict.
No, that's not correct. Do you have a question? If you do not have a question.
I did.
No, Mr. Chairman, if there's no question, there's, there's no reason to proceed. So if there's a question, let's hear it.
You know what? Your attitude.
Time out, time out.
His attitude as a board attorney.
No, 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 no. Actually, I watched the meeting the other night. I wasn't here. Okay, you, you, you were way out of line the other night in the way you spoke to him.
I was?
Okay.
S.
He made it pretty clear. Alls we need to do is just, if you have a question, if you have a question for the architect, ask the architect your question. That's it. You'll have time later on, when everybody's finished, to ask the rest of your questions.
I understand. No questions for the architect.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Oh, sorry.
I have no one with their hands raised.
Actually, the robot raised my own. I apologize. All right, with nobody else with their hands raised or questions to the architect, we'll close the public portion of this. I guess witness, Miss Gonchar?
Yes, those are the witnesses we have this evening. We would ask that the matter be carried to the December fifteenth. I believe that's your next meeting. And that there may be time on that agenda for us to proceed with our next witness. We can confirm that, and if, if that doesn't work, then we would ask for the matter to be carried to January, but at this point, we think we may be able to proceed on the fifteenth, if it, if the board's calendar can accommodate it.
If you don't mind for the board's information and the public, what other witness or witnesses are left to be heard, please?
The next witness we would proceed with is our traffic witness, and then beyond that, we have our planner. We did inquire, we have submitted, as we indicated, the environmental report, which addresses the phase one items, which have all been eliminated. We had not anticipated bringing a witness to discuss that report, but we, if the board wants to have a witness to discuss it, we expect to be before the Environmental Commission before that next meeting. I think their meeting is the fourteenth. That may clarify it. They had not asked for anything at the last meeting. That's the, you know, another witness that may end up being presented. It is not our anticipation right now. So the two witnesses would be traffic and planning, and if that request is made. And then at, at this point, that's our, that's our expectation.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would only say that I have no, we don't know what the composition of the board's gonna be in, in January. So there may be members, you know, yet to join. There may be members leaving. We don't know. So on the fifteenth, you know, that could be an issue rather than in January where we would have the full complement that we're gonna have.
Okay, and we, we were trying to use that as in a, that if our traffic consultant is available, that we would at least begin that testimony or proceed that evening if the board can accommodate it. If you're, I, I guess, are you suggesting that it, that might not be a productive evening or?
Well, what all I'm suggesting is it may increase the amount of transcript and videos that, that new members, you know, have to watch. And obviously, you know, they should have an opportunity to, you know, to participate.
Remember, did you say December thirteenth is our next meeting?
December fifteenth.
Oh.
Wondering why it was a Tuesday?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm most likely not gonna be at that meeting. My daughter has an event at her school. I may, it may, maybe late.
Are there, I guess, I'm not sure, are we the only matter that would be on that evening if it was carried?
December fifteenth?
Yes.
No, I already have two things scheduled. One was a warehouse that was already carried to it, Ninety Industrial Port, and the other is a minor subdivision.
Nineteen Industrial, that wasn't the?
Ninety Industrial, that was the one that was before you at the last hearing in October.
And that one is still proceeding?
Yes.
Nick, are you gonna be there?
Yeah, my conflict. I probably have the same conflict as you, Brian.
Are you having the conflict on ninety?
I got a band concert at Altrich, Christmas concert.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my kids, yeah, well, me and Brian's kid go to the same school, so.
Ms. Gonchar, what we can do is we can carry it to that date for scheduling purposes, if you want. Just to keep you on the, on the radar, or we can carry it to reorg for schedule, scheduling purposes. We've noticed for that as well, but you know, not unique to this board that the deeper into December you get, you know, the more difficulties arise.
If the board could carry it to the fifteenth, and then if we, if, if the, obviously, if the board doesn't have a quorum and doesn't proceed that evening, we would still have time to notice for the, the reorg at that point, correct?
You don't need to notice for the reorg. We've already noticed that as a, as a meeting. When we adopted our calendar in January, we included January two thousand twenty-three.
No, I was only saying, if the December fifteen meeting gets, if you carry us tonight to the fifteenth, just for scheduling consistency, and then that matter doesn't, that meeting is canceled. I know you put it up on the screen, but if we still wanted to notice.
Oh, yeah, you could, yes.
We'd have time, is my point.
Yes.
We noticed to the, or, okay, so if we can do that, just carry us to the fifteenth. If we're not prepared to go forward, it can be carried further to the reorg meeting, and if your meeting is canceled, since you seem to have a number of board members who may have conflicts, I'm sure you'll put up the sign on the screen that you normally do, and we would likely choose to re-notice at that point anyhow, and we would have time to do that. So.
Okay, is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sounds fine to me.
Okay, we appreciate your input, but it will consider it. We'll go back to the client and ask and let the board know if we want to be taken off, or how would that would be handled, but this would just be an interim carry.
Okay, the application of Monmouth Commerce Center LLC case number SP dash one 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 zero zero. Be carried to the board's December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. It's a virtual meeting beginning at seven o'clock. The instructions on how to access the meeting be available on the township's website at least ten days prior. All documents associated with the application are both physically on file and available for inspection at the planning department, and also available on the township's website. There will be no further notice to property owners.
Ms. Gonchar, can you also grant the board an extension of time on that, please?
Yes, through the sixteenth of December, and we'll grant it further, obviously, if it doesn't proceed at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That would be it for us this evening. Thank you for your courtesies.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you have a master plan update?
Only that we're in the process of updating the farmland preservation element.
Okay.
Which should be coming before the board. I would say March, April of next year.
All right. Ron, any reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.